Okay, we're live. Welcome to another Writer's Block Live. We are again at the Trustful Public Library with Trustful City Councilwoman Jamie Melton Anderson today. Jamie, thank you for making time to come and do this.
Thank you, Yuri, for allowing me to reschedule multiple times.
All of these have been rescheduled, like every single one of them has been rescheduled. I can't think of one. I think the only one that hasn't been rescheduled is maybe Ben Horton, maybe.
Good job, Ben Horton.
But, you know, nine out of ten, we're almost batting a thousand on rescheduling. Really quick, just to run through some sponsorship stuff, you see it on the ticker below, 360 Lending, navigating past the homeownership, visit my360lending.com. Appreciate Lisa McClellan sponsoring the show, and also the Mark Turner Law Firm. Any law, attorney at law needs that you have, visit markturnerlawfirm.com or call 205-568-7003. You'll see that on the ticker throughout this. I'll be changing it some, but if you need any of those services, it's on the ticker below. So how was the swearing in the other night?
You know, it was really well attended. We had to move extra chairs in, so the room was packed. It was really nice. I thought everyone did a great job, and it was the last official act of Judge Carl Chambly Jr., so that was very nice. And, no, it was just really, it was just really neat. There was a lot of, a lot of special folks in that room and just kind of the realization setting in that, that a lot of experiences walking out the door, and now we are in charge, so.
Yeah.
So it's kind of, it's kind of sobering, too.
Yeah, Clay, I was at Clay's because I'm working on a book project out there, so I went to theirs, and it was over really quickly, so I tried to like get back over and be like, maybe I can catch like the end of the meeting or something like that. But all that was there was, I ran into Heather Weems and Tandy standing out in the cold talking, so we just talked for 20 minutes or something like that in the freezing cold.
Nice.
So the, so what was the, what was the collective mood like in the room with this, with this new group?
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was hopeful and, and, and positive. I really think the people of Trustful, and I said this on a quick interview right after, but I really think the people of Trustful indicated that they, they liked the direction we're going, but nothing's ever completely perfect, and there are some changes that we, we said we'd make, and so, you know, we're always looking to improve processes and for my part, I just tried to say we want to do as much good for as many people for as long as we can. So that's, I really feel like this is a great group, and I think we're going to, I think we're going to really try to work hard for the people of Trustful, and the goal is really for you not to know that we're there. It's for you to get up every day, live in Trustful, and think about what a great place this is to live, and not even think about your city council or your mayor at all.
I forget who I was talking to, where we talked about it like that, like it's almost like you're a referee in a game. It's like at the end of the game, you don't want to be the story. You want the game to be the, the players to be the story, you know?
That's actually an outstanding analogy that I might, that I might steal. I might steal when I do some talking points, because that's a great, that is a great analogy. That's exactly right. At the end of the day, at the end of our four-year term, we want the story to be the story. We want the city to be the story. We want how people love living here. We do not want to be the story.
Yeah, yeah. Let's talk about your liaison assignments. Like, I know you've got two of the same ones you already had, Cemetery, which I've been a part of, and I've got some stuff I gotta give you after this to take back for all of your files. Beautification, again, a part of.
I had to keep beautification because I love that group so much.
Yeah, and then Leadership Trustful, Finance, and Board of Education. What's, uh, what's the thoughts on those five?
Well, when I went to the bank yesterday and signed my name on 10 different accounts, I kept thinking, yeah, I kept thinking, boy, this is going to be an education. Also, I am not going to prison. So you can, you can rest assured, Mayor Short has agreed to have monthly financial meetings where the entire community is welcome to come and listen to, the entire council get a briefing from the finance director and all of the department heads. I think transparency is the name of the game. We all ran on that. Not, and I want to be clear not that we did not have it before. This is going to be a new level, I think, of, of what we're trying to do.
Taking the next step.
Taking the next step. This, uh, that, you know, we did everything we could. In this last administration, I believe everything was out in the open, but he chose an open door. You could come ask him anything. I think Mayor Cho, I mean Mayor Short is just going to take it to the next level and kind of codify that in a monthly meeting where everyone can kind of hear and we can keep spending under control. So finances, that's one of those things that kind of hit home yesterday when I signed my name on some accounts. And then I'm really looking forward to being the liaison to the schools. You know, you and I are both here at Trustful grads, so it's our alma mater. And last night, I was at a Trustful City Schools Foundation dinner and heard all the wonderful things. We heard from Melanie Dimler, one of our many, like superstar teachers that the kids enjoy, and so we want to make sure that the schools are strong. That, that's our, that's our pledge to the people of Trustful, and I'm certainly going to try to do that with, you know, with the liaison position. And then Leadership Trustful, can't say enough good about Dr. Bradford and Leadership Trustful and the fact that, and you and I have talked about this before. I've lived here my whole life and went through that program and learned something new every single class, and did not, and met new people, and Trustful is not the sleepy little town that we grew up in any, anymore. And so Leadership Trustful is a fantastic resource, and I want to encourage everybody listening to us today to apply, please.
Yeah, people, people, it's like, I haven't gone through it, but I've been a part of it, like, where, like at museums, CHF, stuff like that, and people, it's like every group, people are like, oh, I didn't know, blank. Like, people don't realize how much behind-the-scenes stuff there truly is in a city.
That's right, and it's not, it's not for the faint of heart either, I want to say. It's a, it's a, it is a commitment, and it is a class. It is one day, it's one day a month for a year, and you have to commit in order to graduate. And when you come through it, I've not seen one feedback form, one person say, wasn't worth my time.
Right.
Not one. So, you know, kudos to Dr. Bradford and, and to, to Mayor Cho for starting that, and we're going to keep that going for sure.
For sure. Uh, this term, what are you looking forward to the most? You've already done this once, but what are you looking forward to the most this time?
Yeah, I don't know. I really, I guess, Gary, the same things that I, that I enjoyed the last time, and that's maybe helping people and trying to improve life here in Trustful and make this the place to live, you know, and, and improve quality of life for the people who live here, and then also manage the growth of people wanting to move here. So, but I look forward to getting to know four new people. So none of the other counselors and I were closely acquainted before they ran. So I will say, at the end of five years, I could say the same about Ben, Lisa, Alan, and Perry as well. Knew them, same with Mayor Cho. Knew them, knew of them, did not know them. After five years of working in this kind of crucible, respect, appreciate, you know, just all the things. I know I could call on any one of them, you know, at any time that I needed anything, any advice, any feedback, and I want the same with these four new counselors. And in a different capacity, with Ben being the new mayor, I look forward to that. I look forward to making these new relationships because it is kind of a crucible, and you, whether you want it or not, you get, you get five new best friends. So you're, you're all calling each other, talking all the time, communicating, you're in meetings together. It's, you get five new best friends, whether you ask for it or not. So that's going to be fun.
What are you looking forward to the least?
Oh, um.
Public cellphone number?
I don't know. No, I put all that out there. 318-294-5976. Y'all can call me anytime.
I can't believe y'all do that.
I know.
I get it.
Um, but, you know, I guess the least is maybe just having the burden of educating maybe people who are willfully uneducated over and over and over again with patience and grace, because I really want to do that. And sometimes it gets, yeah, I guess you asked me about a negative. I mean, that's, that's it, right? Because we're all human, and so when you put something on social media, and then you publish it in the paper, and then you say it on your own webpage, and then you talk about it on a podcast, and then somebody still is like, but you didn't, you didn't do X, Y, and Z, and you're like, no, we totally did. So that would be it. It's just maybe the people who are not yet involved in the political process.
Sure.
Getting them involved before something comes up in their life that affects them in a negative way that they believe is maybe our fault, or they don't know how we got from here to there, and, you know, the education piece, that, I think.
Well, and some of that, I guess you'd call it, or I'm gonna call it like expanded transparency in a way should help with that, like.
I hope so.
You know, like you would, you would think you're still going to have, you're still going to have your keyboard warriors, but.
Yes, and that's okay. We sign up for that. I guess it's a matter of just bringing people on board, and sometimes, you know, 10% of the people take 90% of your time. And, but that, but that's okay, because we sign up to serve everybody regardless of how they feel about us or the city or anything else. So that, I guess, but that's what I'm looking forward to the least, is just not being able to, I guess, be taken in our word and for people to believe the best. It's hard when you get to know people and you know that they've got such good intentions and they serve every day tirelessly, and then to still have people believe the worst, believe conspiracy theories, spread rumors, whatever it is that you're, you're dealing with. That's the, that's the part I don't like. So, but that's okay. It comes with it.
I know, I know during the election process is when you and Tandy would kind of do the rumor hazard, but you need, you need to do that while, like.
Like during?
Yes.
Yes.
Like you need to do it right now. What's, what's new in the, in the rumor mill right now? What's the top thing?
You know what?
Like you could seriously make that like such a fun, like do it monthly or something like that.
I mean, really, I guess we could just keep.
It would be so much fun, and it's, it's lighthearted, but it's also kind of could serve a real purpose, too.
Sure, 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 sure. So, yes.
Not to mention, it's hilarious.
You know what? I will, I will take that under advisement, Gary. Thank you. I will, I will, I will very much consider that suggestion, but I, but I agree with you. It is a way to at least squash rumors. I will say that unfortunately, a lot of the stuff gets started on Facebook groups. I'm looking at you, Facebook. A lot of stuff gets started on Facebook group, and then people kind of chime in. So what's crazy is that I try to, I've tried more and more to kind of like protect my own mental health by not being in that space if I don't have to be.
Hosting ghost.
But yeah, we get, we get tagged in a lot of things. So you know what? I think there's, I think we should probably, yeah, we could probably, we could probably do something like that. Yeah.
Let's go.
Yeah. I wonder if Tandy Glenn Smith is listening.
I told her.
She knows she'd be my first call.
I told her the other night. I told her this the other night, that, that's something y'all need to do.
Okay.
So I think, I think Tandy's on board.
Okay, we'll, we'll take it under advisement. I will tell you what I won't do, though. I need to tell you what I won't do. I'm very much of the opinion that we should not get ahead of Mayor Short. I told the other counselors, they're new, they're going to have to decide how they're going to act in the public sphere, but I will say that we're not always going to agree with the mayor, that the council is to keep some checks and balances on the mayor, but we're to work with him and his vision. And so I really very much want to like conduct myself in a way that kind of brings honor to the city and reflects well on our, our town, and so I will not engage in any kind of nonsense. But I know what you're saying in that addressing rumors that you hear so that you can dispel them and say, no, here's actually the truth, and rumor has it that, you know, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and that's actually not true. So I get it. But I, I won't ever, you know, encourage our current counselors or anyone else to kind of get out there and speak on behalf of the city. There's really one guy who should be doing that, and that's Mayor Short.
Absolutely. He was texting me right now.
Oh, perfect.
We were talking about doing one of these and when to.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's who y'all really want to hear from, is the, is the man himself, so.
What do you know now, like, me and you have talked about it before, like, kind of you don't know what you don't know, like when you were first elected, what, what over the last five years? What's maybe the one thing where you're like, okay, I feel better equipped now?
Yes, I would say that actually is finance, shockingly enough. So I feel a little more confident in, in the financials. There is just a ton of stuff that you don't know because counselors don't work at City Hall day-to-day.
Right.
And so a lot of the decisions, even though we, we manage the budget and the council's responsible for the purse strings, we're not responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city. So just getting, and if you think about it, I've only been counselor under one administration, so this will be very different, just kind of feeling a little more comfortable with the balance sheets and the numbers. I'm, I'm not necessarily a numbers person. That's not the sphere that I work in in my regular day-to-day job. But getting smart on that and really trying to understand that municipal finance is unique, and I did not realize that. People say, oh, it's just like your household budget. It's not, though. It's really not.
A lot more pages.
It's really not, though. It's, it's a little more complicated because you can have money from so many different sources, and then things that you have to go buy. When we were sworn in, we were sworn to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Alabama. So there's a lot of regulations put on us at all the levels above us, which are all the levels. And so that, that I feel a little more confident in. You come in and you've never seen the, the city, you know, monthly reporter you've never seen, you've never seen all the accounts that we, we have open, or it really is, it's, it's an education, and it's a lot, yeah.
Yeah. Is it weird now being the, I know Ben Short is mayor now, so there's that experience there, but is it weird being the most, the veteran in the room, the most experienced counsel?
The elder statesman, the oldest. Is that what you want to say, Gary?
I mean, y'all are the youngest, probably the youngest council collectively that Trustful's ever had.
We, we are, and I am.
Because Ben's the youngest mayor, because I did the research on it. I searched through a lot of obits and stuff to find that out.
He is, he is. So, but, you know, I will say, I really appreciate the council's support and trust they place in me as council president. I take that very seriously. So I'm excited this next year to kind of get to work, and hopefully I can teach them things that I've learned. Maybe they can avoid some of the missteps that I made at the very beginning of my term with regards to assuming that I knew. Don't ever, we know what happens when you assume. I'm not going to spell it out, but, so assuming that you know, and, and hopefully between Mayor Short and I will be able to equip them with all, all that they need to make good decisions on behalf of the, the people of Trustful. So, yeah, it's, but it is a heavy responsibility. I, I do feel it. I do feel it.
So you do, you, you do kind of feel like your role is a little different this time or a lot different? Like, it's like you're still on the city council, but like personally, you, it feels heavier a little bit, or what?
A little bit, a little bit. I, I do feel more responsibility. Council president, as someone who doesn't have another person to rely on, on council to, that has experience. So really, when I'm, if you think about it, every council before us has had at least one person that was sitting next to them that had the experience. So you had someone you could call and go, hey, it would take me longer to explain what's going on to these new guys right now, but I need to ask your opinion on X, Y, and Z.
That's right.
I do not have that. I have Mayor Short, which again, is not a problem. It's just that the council is, is supposed to be working with him, but we're not, we're not his mouthpiece, you know, no, we're not his right hand, like do whatever he says. It's just that obviously we want to support him, but Ben is really the only person that I can reach out to right this minute that would have kind of a perspective that would maybe help me or could give me something, especially as we kind of transition some of the things from the last council to the new council. So that, I think, makes it a little weightier is because there's not that, there's not that collective experience there to lean on, and to kind of bounce things off of. I feel like the, the four new counselors are looking to me and to Mayor Short to, to, to guide them and, and, hey, how's this going to go, right? We, we want to equip them, and there is no, the bottom line is there is no class. It is literally just.
Trial by fire.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
What have you seen out of that? I mean, I know y'all just got sworn in, but you've, you've gotten to know them since August. Ben Horton, place one, Brian Jackson, yourself, Jim Miller, Kimberly Farr. What do you think each of them kind of brings to the table? What do you like about them?
Oh, well collectively, I love the fact that they are ready to jump in with both feet. I have to say, they are all inquisitive. They ask great questions. They all participated fully at the ethics and the ALM, the Alabama League of Municipalities training that we had back last month. So I have to say, I'm just really impressed with that. They, they want to do their due diligence. They are conscientious, and the people of Trustful really made a good, they made good choices, and I know that we don't, I already know from the outset that we don't agree on everything 100%, but we do agree in the way that Trustful ought to go, which is expanded transparency and also, you know, improving infrastructure, managing the growth, supporting the schools. We agree on the big rocks. I think they all bring something, something unique in each one of their experiences and perspectives. And, no, I'm really looking forward to working with them, but collectively as a group, I just have to say they, they're ready to serve the people of Trustful, and that's really encouraging.
Yeah, it is. It feels like a good group. Trustful spoke pretty loudly, I think.
I think so, too. I mean, we had the most people vote, even though it was still a very small percentage. I know. Get out and vote, guys.
But, but still, it was pretty, I mean, other than place four, which we kind of figured that one was going to be close.
Yeah, that one was closer than the others, and I think Jim knows that. I mean, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, I think, I, I think we all, not, not one of us, you know, had 100%, right, on any of our places, except Brian Jackson. I'm looking at you.
I told him to go buy a lottery ticket.
Yeah, totally. But, so all of us have a group of people or people who voted and were interested in this that chose someone else instead of who's sitting up there, and I think we all feel like we want to reach out to people. And Mayor Short said it well. When we got sworn in, he said, and to those people who did not check the box next to my name, I'm serving you too. I'm here for you. Like, my office is open. Call me, and, and I feel that way, and I feel like all the counselors feel that way.
Yeah, so cliche thing, the, the goals this, this, of this administration. I mean, where does it start? Where, where do you hope it ends in, in four years?
I know. Wouldn't it be boring to say that, that we want to keep everything together? You know what I mean? Like, I, I feel like we went through such a dramatic.
You don't want it to fall apart, so, you know.
Well, and, and that's the thing. I hate to say that we don't, honestly, this group is not interested in putting our names on any buildings. We're not, we, we, we simply want to do the next right thing for Trustful.
Steward it, yeah.
We want to steward it. We want to steward it and set it up for success. We want to try to navigate these kind of crazy federal waters that we're in. I'm not going into politics, but we're kind of in a crazy time where, you know, maybe the future's a little less certain than we thought it was, and so we want to shepherd Trustful through so that people can say in four years, their life is better, right? That, that, that living in Trustful is easier, it's better, whatever that looks like. So I have to say, a, a few of our big rocks, and, and I'm going not to steal Mayor Short's thunder, but making sure we update the master plan. That has not been done in decades, and so that's a huge undertaking for the six of us. And so I think we're dedicated to updating the master plan and making sure that we're protecting Trustful as much as we can as far as controlling the growth. That's what people told us they wanted.
Yeah.
They wanted improved infrastructure. They want improved traffic flow. They want the schools to continue to excel and continue to climb in the rankings. We're going to be a huge part of all of that, all while properly stewarding your tax dollars and making adjustments for the extremely unfair SSUT that we are under. I lean into the microphone to emphasize things. I just, in case anybody's listening, I just want you in Montgomery to hear that it's completely unfair. It's ridiculous.
It is wild, and it's so crazy. Like, I forget, I forget who I was talking to, because I've done several of these, but I was talking to someone in a city close by. We'll just say that.
Okay.
I don't want to out the city. It's a city close by to Trustful, but is very different from Trustful as far as tax base. It doesn't have as much.
Right.
And I was told how much, you know, over the last year, they've gained from SSUT, and so they are like wholly like, oh, we love this. And like, this is, it's a city that's pretty close to Trustful, and Trustful is, how, how much you think y'all are out because of SSUT?
Oh, I heard.
How many millions?
I heard everything from two to six, and so, so we're not sure, but the answer is a lot.
The answer is a lot, and I'm like, I wonder how that gets sorted out when you've got a city that close by that loves this, and then a city like Trustful, Tuscaloosa certainly, Mountain Brook, some of these others that absolutely hate it. It's like, where's the, where is the compromise? Where's the middle ground? Where's the solution? I know it has to come from the state, but that seems like something that's going to be really difficult.
It does, it does. And one wonders how we got here anyway, but, but, but here we are, because undoing it.
Is still getting their peace, and municipalities are not.
That is correct. So I, I don't, I don't know that there's anyone to, any one person or one party or one, anything to blame about it, but here we are, and we really do have to come to a better, a, a more equitable division, because I do understand that this benefits greatly smaller cities and cities without a large tax base, but it also very much hurts us when we see our, our tax base declining because of brick and mortar, and then at the same time, we know that our citizens are spending more and still buying things, and.
Oh, yeah. We're all guilty of it.
Yes.
Yeah. I guess if there's one person to blame, I guess we could just blame Jeff Bezos.
No comment.
We got what we needed right there. No. What, what about, so like, obviously, something that was, that was huge these last few years was that attempted a fourth elementary school. Where, where do you kind of see that as it stands now? Where, where do you see it for the future?
Well, our schools are in a really good position, so I think, I think that is absolutely still on the table, and I think things are in the works for them to find other avenues to actually get that done. I, I think we will be a part of it, but it won't be as big a part as what that plan at Glendale was.
Yeah.
So, more to come.
Yeah.
To, to be determined, but we definitely still, the need has never gone away. Payne is still the, what is, what does Ben call it?
Payne University.
That is correct. Yes. Yeah, so it's still the largest elementary school in the state, and we still absolutely have to do something for the kids.
Yeah, like, like case in point, like my child goes there. It's 12:50 PM right now. He was done with lunch two hours ago.
I mean, I know.
Seriously.
I know.
It's wild, isn't it?
It's wild, yes. And then the middle schools, you know, we've heard people, the, the children eating in their classrooms and stuff, shouldn't be that way. So.
I'd eat in my classroom when we were at the junior high, but that's because our cafeteria fell into the earth.
That's right, the sinkhole. Yes.
And guess which class I had? Biology.
Ms. Edwards.
No.
Oh.
Ms. Majors.
Oh, okay.
But we were eating lunch in biology, so you know.
Oh, yeah, you don't want to do that. Yeah, sorry about that, Gary. Shout out to Ms. Edwards. What's up? How are you doing, ma'am?
I'll tell you offline what my conspiracy theory is for the fourth elementary school.
Oh, good, yay.
Tinfoil hat, total tinfoil hat.
Love it. I would love to talk about that offline, off this camera. That would be.
It's definitely offline.
That would be so great.
But, but like, like I think part of it, part of it, I, I, I can truly see happening, and then there's parts that are a reach.
Sure.
But it makes sense in my head.
Yes.
But we'll see.
All great plans do start that way.
Um, now that the cliche kind of this administration, your next four years kind of thing, what can y'all do, or how do you see this, we'll end on this, what do you see this group being able to do that sets Trustful up, not for four years, but something that, you know, people can look, you know, 10, 20 years down the road and say like, you know, that this was an accomplishment that this group made for the long term, not just the next election cycle.
Absolutely, and so before I answer your question, so you're talking about stuff, significant things, like the school, the school system in the Melton administration, the entertainment district in the Choate administration, that type of thing.
Whatever comes to mind.
You know, I.
Those are big. Doesn't have to be that big.
Those are big. I, I guess updating the master plan is the boring answer, but that would have, you know, that would have.
Big downstream effects.
It really would, it really would. I would also say that, I don't know. You know what? I don't know, Gary. I have my wish list. Shout out to Taylor Swift. I have my wish list, which is like more parks and green space and save every tree, and you know what I mean? Like I, that, that's what Jamie would want, but this group collectively, I think we just need to do what's best for Trustful, and, and helping the schools is obviously huge on the list that has those downstream effects.
Has to be.
Controlling, controlling the growth and updating that, that master plan, that's, that's boring work, but that has a lot of impact on who and what and how we develop in the future. And so that's a lot of homework that we're going to have to do upfront. It's not, you can't glorify it. It's, it's the hard work, but I think I almost feel like this group is going to be kind of that hardscrabble behind the scenes. Not, we're not afraid to cut a ribbon, not afraid to put our name on a building if it hap, makes it happen, but that's not our goal. I, I really feel like that's, this group's goal is to get their hands dirty and really get in there and, and make a change. So I don't have a great answer for you now, but I, I feel like everything we do will set us up for success. We really do want to do that. I don't, I don't know what the marquee thing will be coming out, you know, the other, the other side of four years, but, but we'll see.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else? Any more rumors or anything before we get off here?
None, I mean, none that, none that I've heard. I mean, none that I've heard or willing to talk about.
They'll come.
Yeah, no, I'm sure. We, I mean, honestly, we are hitting the ground. Yeah, no, I'm sure. Um, we, I mean, honestly, we are hitting the ground running. So as everybody knows, um, we have a school board appointments coming up in January. If you have not applied for a board, please fill out the form. We will be discussing that at our very first workshop, November 20th, because this group did um, offer to, to take a look at these processes. As everybody knows, or hopefully everyone knows, the council is responsible for school board appointments. The mayor is responsible for reporting it, um, for appointing everyone else to all of the boards. He's the final say. He does not have to ask our permission. But we're certainly involved in different areas and different processes for different boards. But I would encourage anybody, if you would like to get involved with the city, please go out to trustful.org and fill out a board application form. And specifically, if you'd like to, to be considered for um, any of the, like I, I would say maybe planning and zoning, industrial board, but those meetings are all open to the public. Please go out and look at when they, when they are and come to all those meetings and.
I've had some of them running on the ticker to, today.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We really do want to get people involved kind of at that level where they're involved in the month to month stuff. So that again, when something affects them, they don't wake up and go, how did we get here? You, please come to those meetings every month. We're going to continue to live stream. Uh, we're going to announce that Mayor Short will announce that financial, that monthly financial meeting. I just encourage everybody to get, get involved. So, but no rumors yet and nothing, nothing going on. I'm excited to, to see how this um, this board interacts or this new council interacts with each other. And we'll be able to see that on the 20th at 5:30.
Absolutely. And I'll, I'll say, I'll, I'll put it back on the ticker as we wind, wind down here. But uh, Trustful does offer the text my gov. And I've put that in the banner too, for instant notifications and updates. You know, when a train's blocking and that kind of thing. Uh, and you just text Trustful to nine one eight nine six and you're subscribed. I was in here with Mayor Choate when uh, Norfolk Southern announced, I guess, like the entrance to Carrington a few weeks ago was going to close. We were sitting right here and my phone went off. So we just talked about it as it happened. We just get the text immediately. So uh, I like using that for sure. So I would encourage anybody else to sign up as well. Well, we're going to get off here. Thank y'all for tuning in. This will be posted Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, all the things. I appreciate you taking the time and we are almost done with these live shows for a while. And we will get back to regular recorded podcasts for a while.
Awesome. Thank you, Gary, for doing this. This actually is like really a great service. And I know a lot of people really enjoyed it during the um, election. And so I really, really appreciate you guys, um, like doing this and, and giving us a platform. Because then we can get some information out and more people maybe can get to know us and get involved.
Yeah. Wasn't that a wild night? Wasn't that crazy? Me and Zach Steele, just people were like, are y'all in a basement? And I'm like, clearly you've never been to the city hall annex. Cause we are very clearly right outside of Dan Windrup's door. Buddy, Buddy was.
You mean my old elementary? Hashtag the old school board building hashtag. I just want everybody to know that Trustful is really good at repurposing real estate.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That was fun. All right. Thank y'all for watching.